Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the October 11th, 2021 Legislative Session of the Salisbury City Council. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and I'd like to make an announcement. If an emergency should arise during this meeting, we ask that you please leave the council chambers in orderly fashion, make a right-hand turn when you get out the door, go to the end of the hall and down the stairs. If for some reason that is blocked, please make a left-hand turn out of the council chambers, and then a right-hand turn at the end of the hall to the end of that hallway and go down the stairs. If you need assistance, please ask and it will be provided to you. We ask that you do not use the elevators in case of an emergency. At this time, please rise now and join me in the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I'll call on Pastor Dana Stouffer of Emmanuel Wesleyan Church for the invocation.
Let's pray. Lord, we come tonight and we want to thank you so much for this day that you've given us. Lord, I thank you for the many blessings that you have shed upon us. And I pray tonight for this meeting, and Lord, I pray that you would guide us in every decision that this leadership team has to make. Lord, I pray for wisdom. And God, before we even go to this meeting, we want to thank you for all the awesome things that you're doing in this city. Lord, we pray for a hedge of protection upon this city. I pray, God, that you would continue to bless it, Lord, and I pray that it would prosper, and, Lord, that tonight we would get a lot accomplished, and we just praise your name even in this meeting tonight, for you've been good to us, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Stouffer. This time, we have a proclamation, and the mayor is tied up in a retreat for the MML, and Mr. Kitro is going to do the honors.
Of course. This is exciting. So I'm going to go ahead and read through our proclamation, and we have a special guest with us. Whereas dysautonomia impacts people of an age, of any age, gender, race, or background, and increased awareness about dysautonomia will help patients get diagnosed and treated earlier, save lives, and foster support for individuals and families coping with dysautonomia in our communities. And whereas dysautonomia is a group of medical conditions that result in a malfunction of the autonomic nervous system, which is responsible for automatic bodily functions such as respiration, heart rate, blood pressure, digestion, temperature control, and more. And whereas some forms of dysautonomia can be very disabling, which can cause social isolation, stress on the families of those impacted, and financial hardships, while other forms of dysautonomia can result in death, causing tremendous pain and suffering for those impacted and their loved ones. And whereas some forms of dysautonomia are considered rare diseases, such as multiple system atrophy and pure autonomic failure, while other forms of dysautonomia are commonly impacting millions of people in the United States and around the world, such as diabetic autonomic neuropathy, neurocardiogenic syncope, and posterior orthostatic tachycardia syndrome. And whereas Dysautonomia International, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization that advocates on behalf of patients living with dysautonomia, encourages communities around the world to celebrate Dysautonomia Awareness Month each October. And whereas it is important to recognize the contributions of the professional medical community, patients, and family members who are working to educate our citizenry about dysautonomia. Now therefore, I, Andy Kitser, on behalf of Jacob R. Day, Mayor of City of Salisbury, do hereby proclaim October 2021 as Dysautonomia Awareness Month, and in our city, and invite all citizens to join us as we observe this month in an effort to increase awareness of this debilitating, sometimes fatal, disease. So as I mentioned, we do have a special guest with us. Brooke, would you like to come forward and receive this proclamation?
We appreciate it. At this time, I'll call for a motion in a second to adopt the legislative agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Blake. Mrs. Gregory. I'll call the motion. All those in favor of adopting the legislative agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. The legislative agenda is passed by a vote of four to zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda. Ms. Blake. Good evening, Mrs. Nichols.
Good evening. On the consent agenda, tonight, we have three items: the September 20th work session minutes, September 27 legislative session minutes, and Resolution Number 3129 approving the reappointment of Catherine Jones to the Disability Advisory Committee for term ending November 2024.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
None.
Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of the consent agenda as read, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. Consent agenda is adopted by a vote of four to zero. Thank you, Mrs. Nichols. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2683 for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Gregory. Mr. Boda. Good evening, Mr. Sullivan.
Good evening, Mr. President. Good evening, Members of the Council. For you tonight is ordinance number 2683, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving an amendment of the City of Salisbury's FY-22 general fund budget and the grant fund budget to allocate funding from the Community Foundation of the Eastern Shore and general fund grant match for maintenance of the bandstand and bridge in the city park. Whereas the City of Salisbury has a responsibility for maintenance of the bandstand and the historic pedestrian bridge in the city park. Whereas the Community Foundation of the Eastern Shore administers the Salisbury Park Bandstand and Bridge Designated Endowment Fund. Whereas routine maintenance is currently needed on both the bandstand and the bridge, consisting of washing, repairing, and painting the structures. Whereas the CFEs Salisbury Park Bandstand and Bridge Designated Endowment Fund has income available for the city to utilize for this required maintenance. Whereas the city wishes to utilize some of the CFEs endowment funds to complete the required maintenance. Whereas Section 7-29 of the Salisbury City Charter prohibits the city from entering into a contract that requires an expenditure not appropriate, excuse me, not appropriated or authorized by the Council of the City of Salisbury. Whereas appropriations necessary to execute the purpose of this grant must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of forfeits of the Council of the City of Salisbury. Now therefore, be it enacted and ordained by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, as follows. Section 1, Mayor Jacob R. Day is hereby authorized to establish a grant account for the Community Foundation of the Eastern Shore on behalf of the City of Salisbury for the city's acceptance of Salisbury Park Bandstand and Bridge Designated Endowment Fund monies in the amount of $40,000. Be it further enacted and ordained by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, as follows. Section 2, the City of Salisbury's grant fund budget be and hereby is amended as follows: Increase CFEs revenue account number 10500-426100-XXX by $40,000. Increase Grant Match General Fund Revenue Account number 10500-499000-XXX by $5,000. Increase Park Bandstand and Bridge Maintenance Construction Expense Account number 10500-513026-XXX by $45,000. Subsection B, the City of Salisbury's FY-22 general fund budget be and is hereby amended as follows: Increase current year surplus account number 01000-469810 by $5,000. Increase Grant Match Parks Account number 91001-599155 by $5,000. Be it further enacted and ordained by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, as follows: Section 3 is the intention of the mayor and council of the City of Salisbury that each provision of this ordinance shall be deemed independent of all other provisions herein. Section 4 is further the intention of the mayor and council of the City of Salisbury that if any section, paragraph, subsection clause, or provision of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid, unconstitutional, or otherwise unenforceable under applicable Maryland law, excuse me, under applicable Maryland or federal law, such adjudication shall apply only to the section, paragraph, subsection clause, or provision so adjudged, and all other provisions of this ordinance shall remain and shall be deemed valid and enforceable. Section 5, the recitals set forth here and above are incorporated into this section of the ordinance as if such recitals were specifically set forth at length in this section 5. Section 6, this ordinance shall take effect from and after the date of its final passage. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2683, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. Ordinance number 2683 is passed by a vote of four to zero. I want to entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2685 for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Gregory. Mr. Boda. Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Word before I begin reading number ordinance, excuse me, ordinance number 2685 for second reader. Revisions were made to the ordinance since its passage on first reader. Those revisions are identified in a redline copy that was provided to the city council and to the city clerk's office. Following my reading of the ordinance as amended, I would humbly request that the city council make sure to entertain a motion to approve the ordinance as read with respect to the amendments contained therein. Ordinance number 2685, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to amend Chapter 8.08 brush weeds and obnoxious growth to include the definition and requirements of meadow cultivation and to allow for the cultivation of meadows in the City of Salisbury, Maryland. Whereas the mayor and council of the City of Salisbury has determined there is a need for periodic review of the City of Salisbury Municipal Code. And whereas the mayor and council of the City of Salisbury desire to amend Chapter 8.08.080 to permit the cultivation of meadows subject to the terms and conditions provided here and below. Now therefore, be it enacted and ordained by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, as follows: Section 1, Chapter 8.08 of the Salisbury City Code entitled Brush, Weeds, and Obnoxious Growth be and is hereby amended by adding the bolded and underlined language as follows. New section 8.08.080, meadow cultivation. Meadows are a planned, intentional, and maintained planting of grasses and wildflowers that are commonly found in meadow and prairie plant communities, so not to include noxious weeds. The cultivation of meadows shall be exempt from the requirements of Section 8.08.010, cutting or removal of grass, weeds, brush, and plant growth required, if the following conditions are met. Subsection A, the meadows shall be managed in a manner so not to become infested with weeds or to create a stagnant, foul-smelling condition. Subsection B, the meadows shall be managed so as not to contain noxious weed growth and must include, at minimum, a majority of plants native to Maryland. For purposes of this section, the term "noxious weed" is defined as any annual, biannual, or perennial weed or plant that adversely affects and/or threatens agricultural production, including but not limited to any noxious weed as defined by the Maryland Department of Agriculture. The meadows shall be set back not less than 10 feet from front property line. The meadows shall be set back not less than 5 feet from side and/or rear property line. Subsection E, no meadow setback is required for side and/or rear property line if a fully opaque fence at least 5 feet in height is installed between the meadow and the neighboring side and/or rear property. Subsection F, the meadows shall be cut to a height no greater than 8 inches, a minimum of 1 time annually, between September 15 and March 15. And subsection G, all property owners who desire to participate in cultivating a meadow must first register with the Housing and Community Development Department. Be it further enacted and ordained by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, as follows: Section 2, it is the intention of the mayor and council of the City of Salisbury that each provision of this ordinance shall be deemed independent of all other provisions herein. Section 3 is further the intention of the mayor and council of the City of Salisbury that if any section, paragraph, subsection clause, or provision of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid, unconstitutional, or otherwise unenforceable under applicable Maryland or federal law, such adjudication shall apply only to the section, paragraph, subsection clause, or provision so adjudged, and all other provisions of this ordinance shall remain and shall be deemed valid and enforceable. Section 4, the recitals set forth here and above are incorporated into this section of the ordinance as if such recitals were specifically set forth at length in this section 4. Section 5, this ordinance shall take effect from and after the date of its final passage. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Questions or comments?
Mr. President, I'd like to amend ordinance number 2685 as read by Mr. Sullivan.
Mr. Boda made a motion to amend as read.
Second.
And Mrs. Gregory seconded. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. First, we'll vote on the amendment. So all those in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. The amendment is passed by a vote of four to zero. I'll now call the main motion for approval of ordinance number 2685 as read. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. Ordinance number 2685 is approved by a vote of four to zero. I want to entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2686 for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Blake. Mrs. Gregory. Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ordinance number 2686, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the purpose of accepting additional Community Development Block Grant CDBG funds in the amount of $17,796, and to approve a budget amendment to the grant fund to appropriate such CDBG funds for the projects outlined in the 2021 CDBG Action Plan. Whereas the Maryland State Office of the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development has determined the City of Salisbury qualifies as an entitlement community. Whereas the city is therefore entitled to receive Community Development Block Grant Funds directly from HUD upon HUD's approval of the city's annual action plan. Whereas the amount of CDBG funding awarded by HUD to the city for PY-2021 was higher than the amount anticipated by the city, as set forth in the FY-2022 Schedule C form that was accepted through the city's FY-2022 budget process. And whereas the FY-2022 Schedule C identifies anticipated PY-2021 CDBG funding in the amount of $388,000. However, for PY-2021, HUD awarded the city CDBG funding in the amount of $405,796, resulting in an award that is $17,796 more than the anticipated amount of CDBG funding set forth in the FY-2022 Schedule C. And whereas Section 7-29 of the Salisbury City Charter prohibits the city from entering into a contract that requires an expenditure not appropriated or authorized by the Council of the City of Salisbury. And whereas the appropriations necessary to execute the purposes of the additional $17,796 of CDBG funds awarded to the city by HUD for PY-2021 as provided here and above must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of forfeits of the Council of the City of Salisbury. Now therefore, be it enacted and ordained by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, as follows: Section 1, Mayor Jacob R. Day is hereby authorized to enter into a grant agreement with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development on behalf of the City of Salisbury for the city's acceptance of Community Development Block Grant Funds in the amount of $17,796. Be it further enacted and ordained by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, as follows: Section 2, the City of Salisbury's grant fund budget be and hereby is amended as follows: Subsection A, increase CDBG revenue account number 12800-423300-XXX by $17,796. And subsection B, increase CDBG operating expense account number 12800-546006-XXX by Be it further enacted and ordained by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, as follows: Section 3, is the intention of the mayor and council of the City of Salisbury that each provision of this ordinance shall be deemed independent of all other provisions herein. Section 4 is further the intention of the mayor and council of the City of Salisbury that if any section, paragraph, subsection clause, or provision of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid, unconstitutional, or otherwise unenforceable under applicable Maryland or federal law, such adjudication shall apply only to the section, paragraph, subsection clause, or provision so adjudged, and all other provisions of this ordinance shall remain and shall be deemed valid and enforceable. Section 5, the recitals set forth here and above are incorporated into this section of the ordinance as if such recitals were specifically set forth at length in this section 5. Section 6, this ordinance shall take effect from and after the date of its final passage. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Questions or comments?
None.
Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2686, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. Ordinance number 2686 is approved by a vote of four to zero. I want to entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2687 for the second reading.
So moved.
Mrs. Gregory and Mr. Boda. Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ordinance number 2687, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving an amendment of the city's FY-22 general fund budget and the capital project fund budget to allocate funding for the Poplar Hill ADA Ramp and Bathroom Conversion Project. Whereas the Poplar Hill Mansion is listed on the National Register of Historic Places. Whereas the Maryland Historic Trust and Office of the Maryland Department of Planning must review and approve projects involving rehabilitation or improvements to such historic properties, which includes but is not limited to the Poplar Hill Mansion. Whereas in FY-2021, the city undertook a project to make the Poplar Hill Mansion handicap accessible, to include the conversion of a bathroom and the installation of a wheelchair ramp, both of which were to be compliant with the guidelines set forth by the Americans of Disabilities Act. Whereas the FY-2021 budget appropriated $40,000 for the ADA Bathroom Conversion and Installation of the Wheelchair Ramp. Whereas the city submitted a request for project approval to the Maryland Historic Trust, which denied the City of Salisbury's request to install a wheelchair ramp. Whereas the Maryland Historic Trust instead requested the city explore alternatives to the proposed wheelchair ramp, such as a wheelchair lift. Whereas the ADA Bathroom Conversion has been completed, and the cost of a wheelchair lift exceeds the available funds remaining in the project account. Whereas the Department of Field Operations estimates an additional $35,000 is required for the project, and has determined that there are insufficient funds available in other accounts transferred to cover the amount required. Whereas the Department of Finance has confirmed that an additional $35,000 is available in the current year surplus. Whereas providing ADA-compliant access to the Poplar Hill Mansion is critical to future eligibility for grants and other federal benefits. Now therefore, be it enacted and ordained by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, as follows: Section 1, the City of Salisbury's Capital Projects Fund budget be and is hereby amended as follows: Project description, Poplar Hill ADA Ramp and Bathroom Conversion. Account description, transfer in general fund. Account number 98022-469313-43028. Amount, $35,000. Project description, Poplar Hill ADA Ramp and Bathroom Conversion. Account description, construction. Account number 98122-513026-43028. Amount, $35,000. Subsection B, the City of Salisbury's FY-22 general fund budget be and is hereby amended as follows: Project description, account description, current year surplus. Account number 01000-469810. Amount, $35,000. Account description, transfer out general capital project fund. Account number 91001-599109. Amount, $35,000. Be it further enacted and ordained by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, as follows: Section 2, is the intention of the mayor and council of the City of Salisbury that each provision of this ordinance shall be deemed independent of all other provisions herein. Section 3 is further the intention of the mayor and council of the City of Salisbury that if any section, paragraph, subsection clause, or provision of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid, unconstitutional, or otherwise unenforceable under applicable Maryland or federal law, such adjudication shall apply only to the section, paragraph, subsection clause, or provision so adjudged, and all other provisions of this ordinance shall remain and shall be deemed valid and enforceable. Section 4, the recitals set forth here and above are incorporated into this section of the ordinance as if such recitals were specifically set forth at length in this section 4. Section 5, this ordinance shall take effect from and after the date of its final passage. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Questions or comments? I have one question. On the need for the extra funds, was that as a result of the bathroom coming in over budget? Or was that just the extra cost to the difference between what a ramp would be and a lift?
Both.
Both?
Both.
Can I ask how much the first one was over, the bathroom?
The bathroom was over by the, I think, $3200?
$3200? Okay. Fine. Thank you.
And the estimate for the lift is slightly less than the request that was asked for. But because it involves a budget amendment, we did not want to throw up a bid and have prices have gone up since the last time we got a quote. We wanted to ensure there was enough funding to get the work completed. But whatever funds are not needed after the bidding process, they're to be done.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2687 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. Ordinance number 2687 is passed by a vote of four to zero. I want to entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2688 for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Blake. Mrs. Gregory. Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ordinance number 2688, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving an amendment of the City of Salisbury's FY-22 general fund budget for the addition of the position of Special Assistant for Intergovernmental Affairs. Whereas the mayor's office has determined a need for a new position to be titled Special Assistant for Intergovernmental Affairs. And whereas this position will enable the city to become effective and efficient in developing new and improved legislation, internal policy for employees, lobbying in Annapolis, securing federal financial earmarks. Whereas to fund the salary and benefits for the remainder of the year, the Department of Finance has estimated $39,600 is required. And whereas the mayor's office budget does not currently have sufficient funds to cover the additional costs of the new position. Now therefore, be it enacted and ordained by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, as follows: Section 1, the City of Salisbury's authorized positions be amended to include an additional position titled Special Assistant for Intergovernmental Affairs and be assigned Grade 8. Subsection B, the City of Salisbury's FY-22 general fund budget be and is hereby amended as follows: Department, Mayor's Office, account description, current year surplus. Account 0100-469810. Amount, $39,600. Department, Mayor's Office, account description, salaries. Account number 12000-501001. Amount, $39,600. Be it further enacted and ordained by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, as follows: Section 2, is the intention of the mayor and council of the City of Salisbury that each provision of this ordinance shall be deemed independent of all other provisions herein. Section 3 is further the intention of the mayor and council of the City of Salisbury that if any section, paragraph, subsection clause, or provision of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid, unconstitutional, or otherwise unenforceable under applicable Maryland or federal law, such adjudication shall apply only to the section, paragraph, subsection clause, or provision so adjudged, and all other provisions of this ordinance shall remain and shall be deemed valid and enforceable. Section 4, the recitals set forth here and above are incorporated into this section of the ordinance as if such recitals were specifically set forth at length in this section 4. Section 5, this ordinance shall take effect from and after the date of its final passage. And council members, please allow me to correct myself. With respect to the first budget amount that is a component of this ordinance, the department was referenced as mayor's office, but as you'll see in ordinance number 2688, there is no department, it is just generally referring to the current year surplus.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2688 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. Ordinance number 2688 is approved by a vote of four to Ordinance number 2688 is approved by a vote of four to zero. I want to entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2689 for the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda. Ms. Blake. Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ordinance number 2689, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to grant a property tax credit against city property tax imposed on certain real property owned by Habitat for Humanity of Wycomico County, Inc., whereas Habitat for Humanity of Wycomico County, Inc. is a local nonprofit housing organization with the stated goal of bringing strength, stability, and self-reliance in partnership with families in need of decent, affordable housing, whereas in furtherance of its goal, Habitat regularly acquires residential properties within the corporate limits of the City of Salisbury, of which it performs rehabilitation and/or new construction, significantly increasing the value of such properties and ultimately transferring such properties to families in need, whereas the city seeks to incentivize and encourage Habitat's ongoing rehabilitation and construction of residential housing within city limits, and whereas granting Habitat a tax credit against the city property tax imposed on eligible properties will encourage Habitat to acquire properties within city limits, which will further result in positive economic and social effects, including but not limited to reducing blight and increasing the inventory of residential housing in the city, and whereas the city through the finance department shall process applications connected to the Habitat tax credit to ensure eligibility of a particular property for the tax credit, whereas the mayor joins with the city council in recommending the implementation of the Habitat tax credit, whereas the city's establishment of the Habitat tax credit hereunder is authorized by section 9-252 of the Property Tax Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland. Now therefore be it enacted and ordained by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, as follows. Section 1, Title III of the Salisbury City Code entitled Revenue and Finance be and hereby is amended by adding a new chapter 3.19 titled Habitat for Humanity Tax Credit as follows. Chapter 3.19 Habitat for Humanity Tax Credit. Section 3.19.010 Habitat for Humanity Tax Credit. In accordance with the provisions of the Tax Property Article, section 9-252 of the Annotated Code of Maryland, there is hereby established a city property tax credit of 100% for real property, provided that the property is owned by Habitat for Humanity of Wycomico County, Inc., with the intention of relinquishing ownership within five years from the date of acquisition. The property is used exclusively for the purposes of development, rehabilitation, and transfer to a private owner, and the property is not occupied by administrative or warehouse buildings owned by Habitat for Humanity of Wycomico County, Inc. Subsection B, Habitat for Humanity of Wycomico County, Inc. shall submit an annual report each year to the Mayor and Council of the City of Salisbury documenting all of the real property holdings of Habitat for Humanity of Wycomico County, Inc. in the City of Salisbury, all transactions involving the real property holdings referenced in the above sub-paragraph B1, and the annual report shall be delivered to the City of Salisbury on or before July 15th and shall include all real property holdings as of the preceding June 30th and shall include the date of acquisition of each parcel of real property for which credit is applicable on the preceding June 30th. Subsection C, the tax credit for each property shall continue until such time as the property is transferred from Habitat for Humanity of Wycomico County, Inc. to a private owner, but in no event for more than five years. When the tax credit ceases, the property and its assessment shall be reinstated on the City of Salisbury real property tax roll in the beginning of the next fiscal year. Subsection D, the allowance of the tax credit shall be administered by the City of Salisbury Finance Department. In order to obtain the tax credit, Habitat for Humanity of Wycomico County, Inc. shall submit such documentation as the City of Salisbury Finance Department requires to determine the eligibility of a parcel of real property. The required documentation shall be provided upon acquisition of a property and shall include but not be limited to a copy of the property settlement agreement. If the finance department makes the finding of the ineligible of a parcel for the tax credit, the finance department may disallow or revoke a tax credit effective as of the date of ineligible. The credit shall be allowed on and after September 1, 2021, and shall be prorated as of Habitat's date of acquisition. Be it further enacted and ordained by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, as follows. Section 2 is the intention of the Mayor and Council of the City of Salisbury that each provision of this ordinance shall be deemed independent of all the provisions herein. Section 3 is further the intention of the Mayor and Council of the City of Salisbury that if any section, paragraph, subsection, clause or provision of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid, unconstitutional, or otherwise unenforceable under applicable Maryland or federal law, such adjudication shall apply only to the section, paragraph, subsection, clause or provision so adjudged, and all other provisions of this ordinance shall remain and shall be deemed valid and enforceable. Section 4, the recitals set forth here and above are incorporated into this section of the ordinance as if such recitals were specifically set forth at length in this section 4. Section 5, this ordinance shall take effect from and after the date of its final passage. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Questions or comments?
I think this is the beginning of a series of pieces of legislation that are going to be very effective in addressing some of the housing issues in our cities, so very much in support of this.
Thank you. We all agree with that, I think.
Yes.
Okay, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2689 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. Ordinance number 2689 for the first reading is approved by a vote of four to zero. I want to entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2690 for the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Blake. This is Gregory. Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ordinance number 2690, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to amend chapter 17.16 of the Salisbury City Code by adding subsection 17.16.090 Nonconforming Use Zoning Exemption Program. Whereas housing studies show vacant properties create a large financial burden to the jurisdictions they are located in through an increased number of calls for emergency services. The city town absorbed maintenance costs and lost tax revenue as a result of decreased property values, whereas the Mayor and Council of the City of Salisbury desired to update the Salisbury Municipal Code to adopt a nonconforming use zoning exemption program to reduce vacant properties within the city and create additional housing opportunities, whereas subsection 17.16.040D of the Salisbury City Code provides no building, structure, or lot where a nonconforming use has substantially ceased for a continuous period of one year, whether or not fixtures or equipment are removed, shall again be put to a nonconforming use. And whereas the City of Salisbury Housing and Community Development Department has identified a number of properties that are vacant because each individual's property nonconforming use has ceased for more than one year pursuant to subsection 17.16.040D of the Salisbury City Code, whereas many such property owners have expressed it is not economically feasible to return their properties to single-family homes, and as a result, the properties remain vacant, whereas implementing the nonconforming use zoning exemption program will allow such properties to continue as legal nonconforming uses, which may result in positive economic and social effects, including but not limited to eliminating vacant properties and creating additional housing options in the city, whereas the City Housing and Community Development Department therefore proposes the creation of a zoning exemption program to allow properties to regain legal nonconforming use status within strict parameters, whereas the city through the Housing and Community Development Department and the Department of Infrastructure and Development shall develop an application for participation in the nonconforming use zoning exemption program, and whereas the Housing and Community Development Department and the Department of Infrastructure and Development shall review all completed applications and approve or deny participation in the nonconforming use exemption program, whereas the procedures and criteria necessary to qualify a property owner for participation in the nonconforming use exemption program shall be codified in an amendment to chapter 17.16 of the City of Salisbury Municipal Code, whereas a public hearing on the proposed amendment was held by the Salisbury Planning and Zoning Commission in accordance with provisions of chapter 17.16 of Title 17, Zoning, of the Salisbury Municipal Code on September 16, 2021, whereas the Salisbury Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of the proposed text amendment to section 17.16.090, whereas the Salisbury City Council has concluded that it is in the best interest of the city to allow property owners to regain legal nonconforming use status when specified criteria are met, and whereas the mayor joins with the city council in recommending the implementation of the nonconforming use exemption program in the application process. Now therefore be it enacted and ordained by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, as follows. Section 1, chapter 17.16 of the Salisbury, excuse me, of the City of Salisbury Municipal Code entitled Nonconforming Lots, Structures, and Uses be and hereby is amended by adding a new subsection to chapter 17.16 titled Nonconforming Use, Nonconforming Use Zoning Exemption Program as follows. Chapter 17.16.090, Nonconforming Use Zoning Exemption Program. Subsection A, Purpose, to assist in the reduction of vacant properties and provide for increased available housing within the City of Salisbury. Subsection B, Definitions, applicant means the owner of a property who submits an application to participate in the nonconforming use zoning exemption program. Program means the nonconforming use zoning exemption program identified in this chapter. Property means a residential property subject to the nonconforming use zoning exemption program. Subsection C, Criteria for Approval, Conditions, the property must have lost its nonconforming use within 60 months prior to submitting an application under the program, or the property must be vacant and the property's nonconforming use must have substantially ceased for a continuous period of one year. Application Requirements, subsection D, all applications to participate in the program must be submitted on or before, that date is left blank. Subsection 2, applicant shall be in good standing with the City of Salisbury. Good standing shall be defined as applicant shall not owe delinquent taxes to the City of Salisbury. Subsection, or little i, 2, applicant shall not have outstanding code violations on any property owned by applicant within the City of Salisbury. Applicant shall not own a condemned property within the City of Salisbury unless applicant has an approved rehabilitation plan for the condemned property. Subsection 3, applicant shall submit an application rehabilitation plan for approval by the Housing and Community Development and Infrastructure and Development Departments. The rehabilitation plan shall include architectural renderings of the exterior and interior of the property and shall certify that the property contains all-street and/or on-street parking of at least one space per unit. Subsection D, 4, applicant shall agree to adhere to federal, state, local fair housing guideline practices. Subsection D, 5, applicant shall obtain all permits required to execute the rehabilitation plan and shall comply with all applicable building codes. Subsection E, Program Requirements, within 12 months from the application approval by the Housing and Community Development and Infrastructure and Development Departments, the applicant shall compete, complete all terms and conditions of applicant's rehabilitation plan, obtain a certificate of occupancy. The property must be inspected by the Housing and Community Development Department. The property must be made available for rent within 12 months following application approval by the Housing and Community Development and Infrastructure and Development Departments. The property shall be subject to a three-year probationary period. During the probationary period, the following additional conditions and requirements apply. All units within the property shall be subject to yearly inspection by the Housing and Community Development Department. The property owner shall maintain code and standards of livability requirements. There shall be no more than three code violations per property per year. There shall be no more than three calls for service per unit located on the property per year. No property shall be vacant for more than a 12-month period following the completion of rehabilitation plan. Subsection F, Costs, there shall be a $500 nonrefundable application fee per property. During the three-year probationary period, applicant shall pay the following licensing costs: $240 per landlord license per year, $240 per rental unit per year. At the end of the three-year probationary period, all costs shall return to those then in effect. Subsection G, Violations, failure to complete the probationary period shall result in the property's loss of its legal nonconforming use status pursuant to the program. Violation of any program requirement shall result in the property's loss of its legal nonconforming use status pursuant to the program. Subsection H, Appeals, the denial of any application under this chapter may be appealed to the Board of Zoning Appeals. The appeal shall be filed in writing within 30 days of the date of the final decision or denial to the Apple. State clearly the grounds on which the appeal is based, and be processed in the manner prescribed for hearing administrative appeals under Board of Zoning Appeals Rules of Procedure. Be it further enacted and ordained by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, as follows. Section 2, is the intention of the Mayor and Council of the City of Salisbury that each provision of this ordinance shall be deemed independent of all the provisions herein. Section 3, is further the intention of the Mayor and Council of the City of Salisbury that if any section, paragraph, subsection, clause, or provision of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid, unconstitutional, or otherwise unenforceable under applicable Maryland or federal law, such adjudication shall apply only to the section, paragraph, subsection, clause, or provision so adjudged, and all other provisions of this ordinance shall remain and shall be deemed valid and enforceable. Section 4, the recitals set forth here and above are incorporated into this section of the ordinance as if such recitals were specifically set forth at length in this section 4. Section 5, this ordinance shall take effect from and after the date of its final passage.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Questions or comments?
I have one question. So I see the appealing body is the Board of Zoning Appeals, not the Housing Board of Adjustments and Appeals?
Correct.
Is that, that's correct?
Yes. And if you're asking for my opinion, I think that's appropriate, and the reason why I do it is because it does have an impact on the zoning code, and in fact, this particular amendment is amending chapter 17, and typically speaking, appeals taken from policies adopted under that chapter are heard by the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Okay, thank you. Second, I'd like to make an amendment to the ordinance on line 26, change the word compete to the word complete, as Mr. Sullivan corrected himself during reading.
Do you have a second to the amendment?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Blake.
I do have two questions, also in addition.
Go ahead.
Under the section 3, number 3 and 4, there should be no more than three code violations. I guess all the code violations have a price on them in that department. You don't have to list them here what the violations would be. The same thing for three calls for service. How much, what was the penalty for three code violations and three calls for service per unit?
The penalty is that they will lose their eligibility to participate in the nonconforming use zoning exemption program. Now, Councilwoman Blake, I think you bring up an excellent point. There are many things that can constitute a code that obligate individuals and property owners to abide by certain regulations adopted by the city. Here, this could be a building code violation, could be a zoning code violation, could be a property maintenance code violation. I think that perhaps if you would like to specify that particular type of code violation, that's very appropriate, and it wouldn't substantively nor materially change the ordinance such that it couldn't be adopted on second reader at the next meeting.
Does anyone else feel? I don't.
I think maybe before she was on council, we went through a series of things with the calls for service to properties and, and the, almost like a three strikes, you're out kind of a deal with rental properties on code violations, whether it's grass, whether it's mold, you know, if they get a bunch of them in a year on one property. So there's, that's already established as what those are. I think we did that four, five years ago, about five years ago, and we included the calls to service from police departments, so if it's specific criminal activity at that property that they're constantly responding to, those are defunct.
And we made it per unit.
Not just to lose this, but to lose their license.
Are the tenants evicted, or is there actually a price on the calls for service above the rate?
Eviction is, this is more of a, it's property-based. So it's, it was part of our nuisance property initiative where they were targeting properties that were the higher calls for service for the police, you know, demanding much more of their resources. So before, there was never any penalty towards that.
So the penalty is what? A price or eviction?
They could lose their.
Just their license?
Their landlord, where they, they could not rent that property for a year. So the punishment is.
People would be evicted? Okay.
And each unit, if it's multi, correct me if I'm wrong, Ron, each unit is given three?
Correct. Each unit is given three.
So you don't penalize.
Calls for service for the police department.
So you don't penalize the other, the other units?
There were four units in there.
Okay.
They're targeting one unit.
That one unit, okay.
The whole piece of property.
Okay, all right, and that is, and that is outlined somewhere else?
Correct.
Okay, and I obviously just wasn't here when that happened. I just wanted to clarify.
No problem. Good question.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions or comments? All right, first we'll, we'll vote on the amendment to change compete to complete. I'll call that motion first. All those in favor of the amendment is made by Mr. Boda, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The chair votes aye. The amendment to the ordinance is approved by a vote of four to zero. I'll call the main motion now. All those in favor of ordinance number 2690 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The chair votes aye. Ordinance number 2690 for the first reading is approved by a vote of four to zero, and I'm assuming that the blank date will be filled in before the next.
Under D1.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
With respect to subsection D1, all applications to participate in the program must be submitted on or before. Would you prefer that I effectively calendar out the date upon which this ordinance would take effect?
I think, I think we should have it in there. Ron, do you have a, can you come up to the mic?
I have two trains of thought on that, the date. Number one.
Number one, we could go with the date that the ordinance passes, or we could set a future date as like December 1st and give some time to get the publicity out about the program. I do know that the public is talking about it. I don't necessarily know that that's needed, but that would set a specific date as December 1, knowing that November 30th would be the expiration.
Mr. Kettrow, could you get with them and make sure that?
Can I ask Kim a question? So when we pass an ordinance, and it's signed by the mayor, how long is that? Because there is an appeal process to an ordinance. Correct? So like somebody could do a petition?
Not.
I mean, I'm just, no, they can't? Okay.
Yeah, you could always petition for a referendum. It has 20 days.
Well, I, I like Ron's thought about putting some time in for marketing.
Sure.
So if you guys can put your heads together before, because I, I don't like to.
Ms. Blake, yeah, I mean, so the expectation is this will go to second reader on the 25th of October, and then if we wanted to do 30 days, we can pick that date after that, and then you'd have the 12 months.
Fine.
Successive, so.
Does that sound good to everybody? Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Ron. Okay. I want to entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2691 for the first reading.
Still moved? Second.
Ms. Blake, Mrs. Gregory, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ordinance number 2691, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury authorizing the mayor to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Wycomico County Health Department and approving a budget amendment of the FY 2022 general fund budget to appropriate funds received from the Wycomico County Health Department in the amount of $10,000. Whereas the funds have been provided by the Wycomico County Health Department in conjunction with Midshore Behavioral Health, Inc. for a Safe Station program. Whereas Safe Station is an innovative program that helps remove barriers to treatment for members of our community who are eager to recover from a substance use disorder. Whereas the goal of Safe Station is to help people with linkage to treatment and recovery services by allowing them to practice self-determination. Whereas the city of Salisbury Fire Department will provide non-emergent medical checks to all individuals that enter into, excuse me, that enter the Safe Station. Whereas the city of Salisbury must enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Wycomico County Health Department defining how these funds must be expended. Whereas the accepted funds shall be used to purchase additional emergency medical supplies and equipment. Whereas the fire chief and the mayor have recommended that the city accept the monetary donation and allocate the funds to the fire department's FY 2022 operating budget. Whereas Section 7-29 of the Salisbury City Charter prohibits the city from entering into a contract that requires an expenditure not appropriated or authorized by the council of the city of Salisbury. Whereas appropriations necessary to execute the purpose of this grant must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of four-fifths of the council of the city of Salisbury. Now therefore, be it enacted and ordained by the council of the city of Salisbury, Maryland, as follows. Section 1, Mayor Jacob Bardet is hereby authorized to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Community Foundation of the Eastern Shore to accept funds in the amount of $10,000. Be it further enacted and ordained by the council of the city of Salisbury, Maryland, as follows. Section 2, the city of Salisbury's grant fund budget B and hereby is amended as follows. Subsection A, increase general fund Wycomico County Health Department reimbursement account 01000-427301 by $10,000. Subsection B, increase fire department expenditure medical account number 24035-546016 by $10,000. Be it further enacted and ordained by the council of the city of Salisbury, Maryland, as follows. Section 3, is the intention of the mayor and council of the city of Salisbury that if any section, paragraph, subsection clause or provision of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid, unconstitutional, or otherwise unenforceable under applicable Maryland or federal law, such adjudication shall apply only to the section, paragraph, subsection clause, or provision so adjudged, and all other provisions of this ordinance shall remain and shall be deemed valid and enforceable. Section 5, the recitals set forth here and above are incorporated into this section of the ordinance as if such recitals were specifically set forth at length in this section 5. Section 6, this ordinance shall take effect from and after the date of its final passage. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2691 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. Ordinance number 2691 for the first reading is passed by a vote of four to zero. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you very much.
Mrs. Nichols, do we have any requests from, for speaking? I don't, what happened there? Don't see.
They were tired of hearing me speak.
Did it crash?
I don't think we.
I think he, they got kicked off. It's just me on here right now.
Okay.
So I'm not sure what's going on back, back there. I'm the only, there's no one else on.
There's nobody else. Okay, that's fine. We're going now to.
I forgot to sign out.
We can accommodate you. Would you like to come up and?
Absolutely, thank you.
Strike one, strike three. Ron is, Ron's keeping track.
I didn't know we were that formal. Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council, Collins, everyone, Director of Government Affairs for the Coastal Association Realtors and city of Salisbury resident. First of all, I want to apologize for not making the mayor's press conference the other day about housing initiatives. I was out of town. He invited us to be there, and we're very excited about the good things that the mayor and council are planning as far as housing goes. Several items were discussed here tonight. Molly Hilgoss wasn't here from Habitat, but we're all excited about the Habitat. Ron and I have been working on the nonconforming use, and all in all, I think it's a great idea. It's a, it's a very good step forward. Ron and I have been talking, and I have some concerns about the calls for service, that being flushed out. What is a call for service? How many times does it happen to, to count against your property? What does losing your nonconforming use mean? It's a lot of money to go into rehabbing some of these homes and hate to lose a nonconforming use over a neighbor not liking somebody and just calling the police every day. So I'm sure we can get that resolved, but all in all, I want to congratulate you and, and say thank you for all your hard work towards trying to solve some of our housing problems. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Anyone else? Okay. Mr. Kettrow, on behalf of the executive branch.
They told me I could say a couple things, but not too many, so I'll keep it brief. Our movie on the river events have been super successful. Our last one is our double feature coming up this Friday at the amphitheater, so we invite families and friends to come join us after they enjoy Third Friday. Again, we just encourage people to continue to get vaccinated and be safe out there, but pretty short today.
Great, thank you. Council comments? Mr. Boda.
What movie's playing Friday night?
We are doing, for the, for the second one, it's going to be Guardians of the Galaxy, because it's a Halloween theme. So come on, I think that's the one you want to come see.
Probably, yeah. Yeah. Not much, just encourage everyone to get vaccinated and help out your neighbor if they need it.
Thank you. Ms. Blake. Angela.
Yes, it's been quite an evening, Mr. Boda. Thank you. Just as always, if you're healthy enough, please, please, please donate blood. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Angela. Michelle.
I just want to say that this is, I wasn't aware of this until earlier, but it's ADHD Awareness Month, and as someone who has dealt with that her whole life, I can safely say that I understand the struggles, both the good and the more humorous ones. So if you, like me, struggle with ADHD, find your keys in your wallet right now and put them by the door so you don't go looking for them first thing in the morning. But yeah, that's, that's about it, just.
Thank you.
Get vaccinated.
Thank you. I must apologize to Catherine Jones. I neglected when she, her appointment was made to thank her publicly, so I'd like to do that. So Catherine, thank you very much for your, for your service and volunteering, and I believe this is her at least second round on that committee, which is, which is good. So thank you. And I want to let everybody know that I got my booster, and I'm still here. And I didn't have, I had a slight headache for about an hour. That was it. So please, everybody, it's not, it's not, it's not scary, it's not, just get, get vaccinated so we can all get through this and at some point get back to some reasonable of normality. And again, I echo Angela's comments about blood. The blood supply is in bad, bad shape, and it's been that way. And I think we actually got down to one point where there was one day's supply, which is, that's pushing the, pushing the limits, so please, if you can, give blood. Thank you for everyone who attended today. We appreciate it. Thanks for your participation, and we'll see you, oh, I must say that I'm leaving tomorrow to go see my granddaughter graduate from basic training, and I haven't seen her since August the 3rd.
Fantastic.
And God bless her, I'm, I'm so proud of her. But I will be here next Monday, so have a good week, everybody. We are adjourned.